Welcome to Hexham Town Council here at Prior School, Hexham Abbey, on Monday the 14th of July 2025 at 6am. So I'm the Chair of the meeting, Derek Hendy, the Mayor and councillor, chairing the whole council meeting. So that's number one. I am now going to move to item number seven, to receive a presentation from Hadrian Healthcare. And we have here Jas Gill, who is the Managing Director, and also Andrew Patiuli. Patiuli, is that Italian? Yeah, who is the architect. So the reason for this is that Hadrian Healthcare approached the Hexham Town Council. They've mentioned about a new development in the vicinity of the Murrayfield site on the Allen Dale Road. So following that discussion, we decided that probably be wise to do this presentation. Now, this is going to be limited in scope. I've made this clear that this is limited in scope as presentation, that it is the generalities of what Hadrian Healthcare do, maybe some of their other locations. It is not, and I've made this quite clear, it is not about a future planning application that is coming. So make that absolutely clear. We are not going to talk about the planning application that is at this stage. It is not about the planning application. The planning application will come formally from the County Council via normal routes to the Planning and Infrastructure Committee of the Hexham Town Council in the future, but also be seen by the Northumberland County Council Planning Committee. So is everybody clear on that? This is not about the actual planning application. It is the generality of what Hadrian Healthcare do and their intentions. Is that all clear? Okay, I'm now going to hand over to Jas and Andrew when we welcome you to Hexham Town Council.
Thank you, Derek. Hi, everyone. As Derek said, my name is Jas Gill. I'm the Managing Director of Hadrian Healthcare Group. Joining me today is Andrew Batilow, our long-standing architect. Firstly, I'd like to say thank you for allowing us to come today and to meet with you. It's really important in the towns and communities that we work in that we have some formal participation in what's happening. That's something that's quite important to us. So a little bit about Hadrian Healthcare. It was established in 1996. The owner and the founder, Chairman Chad called Ian Watson. And I joined Hadrian Healthcare some six, over 16 years ago. And over time, our organisation in the care sector has been considered to be a very forward-thinking and innovative developer and operator of care homes, and that's across the sector. Our care homes in the north-east at the moment, we have the Manor House at Gosforth that we identified the site, developed and operated. And that's now 15 years since we've done that. Towards the end of this meeting, I'd like to invite any one of you to come and have a look at that to see, look, this is how a development will look 15 years down the line. Never mind what I'm trying to tell you, what something's going to look like today. The other care home is on Wickham Bank, the Manor House Wickham, and that's about 13 years as well in the making. So both of those care homes are rented outstanding by CQC. And so, as Derek mentioned, we've acquired the Murrayfield site on Allen Dale Road, and we've required that specifically for a care home development. And that's what our business is. Recent successes, we, our latest development, we did one in Skipton very recently, and that was voted UK, voted by Knight Frank, the UK Luxury Care Home of the Year for 2024. So we're quite accustomed to working in conservation areas. We like working to a very high standard. I have to be very careful what I'm talking about to keep out the planning remit, which I'm not going to go down. And effectively, whenever we identify a site, we make something bespoke for that site. So we don't have a model A, B or C that sits on any particular site. It is bespoke to that particular site, taking in the views, taking in the levels. Effectively, something that doesn't look or feel like a care home from the outside, something that doesn't look or feel like a care home in the inside. So the people who choose the care home to be their home can effectively have more than just stepping into a care home without changing what their lifestyle is. So, you know, we would typically have a cafe bar area looking out onto the garden, taking into account the air dressing salon, a cinema room, dining rooms, a bistro. So these are the kind of, some of the features that you see in today's care homes where you really also want to be able to bring the community in. So for example, if you've got a resident, it's very often you see grandchildren coming to visit them because there's something to do in the care home. You may come across to meet a relative. You might have a beer at the bar. You might have a glass of wine and join them for a meal. So this is the kind of level that we've always cooperated at. And you can see, if you take a marker to visit Gosforth, some of that live connection. So what's really important as well, and it's quite interesting because when I researched about Hexham Town Council, I was quite impressed with how proactive this organisation is. And that was one of the key drivers to pick up the phone and try and get here to be able to introduce ourselves. So we can also try and understand what's happening in this community and how we can play a role in that community. Economically, our development will generate 18, 19 full-time roles. There'll be opportunities for local businesses to interact with the care home. But it's also what else can we do to help and integrate ourselves in the community? Because we're here for the long term. This is not about doing the development and then leaving. This is about embedding ourselves in the community. There'll be training opportunities for staff. You know, we, you know, if the way things work out, it'll probably be around about 27 before we, if everything goes to plan, before we open. So we can start to think about integrating with the colleges and try to help some people to get the skills so in due course they can come and break in a care home. So it's quite important for us to get that dialogue with yourselves. We know who we are. It's not just about an organisation. It's about having an active presence in the community. So I'll show you a couple of very quick slides on some of the recent developments. Well, one of the developments that we've done very recently, just to give you a bit of a flavour of the kind of the standard that we work to. So this is our development that we completed in Roundhead in North Leeds. And that was the photograph in October 24. And that was in, that site effectively was two houses.
Two houses, a conservation area, outside park, some sort of issues there, I guess.
Yeah, yeah. And this is kind of, when we put your shares in the presentation, then you'll be able to zoom in, see some of the details. And it's the kind of high standard and how everything's very bespoke. It's not about having a model that just sits on a site. This is a photograph of our garden at Gosforth. So Gosforth opened 15 years ago. And two years ago, just over two years ago, we did an extension.
The extension is from the sort of there, basically the middle there to the right, wherever the last balcony is.
Yeah, so that was originally a 46-bed room care home. And we acquired the site next door and extended that by another 14 suites effectively. And that's just an indication of the standard of the gardens of development. That's kind of 15 years old. This is an example of one of the care homes that we did in Harrogate, of a lounge inside. And also, this is the kind of cafe bar area that I was talking about. That typically would look out onto a garden. So there's a lot more to do than what most people would envisage that goes on in a care home. It's a kind of arriving to meet, you know, it's the typical example. If you're going to meet somebody in a hotel, you wouldn't go and sit in the bedroom. You would sit somewhere else in the cafe bar area or out in the gardens. And it's created those spaces to kind of enrich people's lives and... That's just a very, I mean, that's just a typical bedroom shop there where you've got a very generous size. We've got kind of the quality of the furniture you can see on the left-hand side. Oh, yeah, yeah. We're going to skip the next one, we'll just pause there. And I'll hand over to Andrew.
I can't move it because I've jumped that far because I don't want to... I can't stop talking about the building, Mike. I can talk about the site.
Yeah, yeah. So if there's anything that'd be inadvertent, we step into an area that we shouldn't, please put your hand up, let us know. We'll make sure you don't come across as... I must jump in my address. I'll just start from this point, but you can probably do know that to know the site. But Allen Dale Road, the old Murrayfield House.
Andrew, would you like to...
Yeah, the site here is fairly above permission from, well, it's got two separate permissions which join this split site into two halves, fair enough, as of the moment. I'll show you what they are. You probably know Allen Dale Road, but it's sort of halfway up just before you get to the... To get to the school there. That's the size of the site. One of the sort of their last sort of houses in a large site, I guess. To the north of there, there's very many more of them. And the very old development is Lincoln Terrace on the right-hand side. And then it's nearer round it. I'd like to say more, I'd go into plumbing, but...
This was just an analysis of what's around the site. Again, more probably a bit detailed, I would say. Here at the moment, and again, that's the conservation area. Just to demonstrate that it is in the conservation. It hasn't always been.
I think it was extended in the mid 70s. Which actually is also a lot of... Conservation areas and kind of what we do could have raised quite well.
Well, it does mean we've got no precedent in terms of plumbing areas like that. So it's a difficulty as well. Just in terms of the site itself, just so you know, a little bit about that. The house sits more or less on a sort of a plateau within the middle of the thing. It's very, very steep heading up. The road, in fact, if you shoot along there, you can't actually see the entrance at all. Or you can very easily miss it. It's about four metres off from the road to the house. And it's relatively flat at the back. Then it rises again. It's quite significant tree cover all the way around it. So you need to sort of start from the premise of what can you actually, what can you actually use in that? These are the kind of carousels that have approval. Three-storey semi-detached house in front, one of those in the back. Slightly confusing, I haven't joined the two together, but they've got approval more or less at the same time, but they were completely separate. And the houses in the front create a new, you know, an improved access on Allen Dale Road, which we obviously have to do the same for the care home. And the windows at the back actually use the existing access off Exton West there, which is really just a garden gate. So you must have been surprised that that was allowed.
I wonder into the history of that because we're talking about plumbing.
All right, so conscious, so this, so all councillors are aware. What you've just seen there is things that went through planning, through County Council planning, and were approved by planning. So what you've seen is facts.
Planning history.
Just the planning history. But it's conscious about where you go next with this. Like, do we, could we stop there and start with any questions? Do we believe?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't want, don't call for that. So we'll end it there. So councillors have seen examples of what Hadrian Healthcare do, what their business plan is and what they're doing. Some examples of some of their work that they have elsewhere, that they're actually doing the builds and then continue the activity. That is, that you've seen the site where it's proposed, that you've seen the original planning application, which did come through Hexham Town Council and was approved by Northumberland County Council in 2024. Okay, so that's what we're seeing today. So just to be clear again, we are not making any decisions today. This is for questions and answers. There's no decisions, there's nothing to be taken away from this. Frank, so I want to go to the question. So I will, Penny, you know what's new?
Frank, I'd like to ask a general question about what you offer as an organisation. So do you offer nursing? And do you offer elderly mentally ill? Or is it solely residential at your existing site?
Okay, so we, and our expectation here is to offer residential care. But across residential care, you get a variation of dependency. So you have a mix of people. And residential care, you can have individuals who make a lifestyle choice because they like to come and have the companionship in a care home and the lifestyle that that offers. Or they may require some help with personal needs. But this development would also be providing accommodation for people with some form of memory impairment, some form of dementia care. And once again, that can vary across, you know, the level of dependency. So you could have someone who has very kind of early onset of some form of memory impairment. And as they progress, then some of those people would stay with us and the care adapts and the support adapts for that. But in terms of generalness in care, no, that's not something we'd be offering. That's a different skill set for somebody else.
Two questions really, and a word of what you're going to answer. So I'm very clever with the first. How much would you answer round, how much would the residential care in Nantay, for example, for one of your units, if it's comparable enough? How much would you charge me a week?
So I'll tell you what the fee rates are across here at the moment, at this point in time. At the moment, in Hexham, there is...
I didn't ask that, just tell me how much you're charging.
Well, we, we've done the development around here, and we did the development in Skipton, and they're now traded by Anchor and Overgroup. And their fees are going to be around about, I would say, I think the best, 17, 1700 pound a week.
A week?
Yeah, that's my understanding of what they will be.
My second question, and I've listened to what you said. It's going to be a very busy place, obviously, with the minstrels and grandchildren visiting and everything. You know, finding access might be a problem on that busy road, particularly when it's near a school. So I think, I think that's going into planning, Stephen. You've put into access then?
Yes.
So that's a final question.
I can just kind of generate...
No, no, no. Sorry about that. So that's a, that's a plan, that's going into detail of the planning application. So just for clarity for all councillors, the Northumberland County Council highways, when the planning application is presented, they will do a test of whether the access is appropriate and it can be, you think. And they will then give an offer in opinion as the specialists to say yes on or, or do that to be some amendments. Stephen, do you have any other questions?
No, thanks.
Oh, bring it down. No, you're welcome, bring it down.
Now, the practical thing, are your rooms en suite? Yes, that's, so simplistically, en suite. The definition of an en suite in a care home is a toilet and a hand wash basin. Our definition is also a full wet room, so we have shower facilities as well. And also, just, I think sometimes in care homes can look good for relatives visiting them, more of the people in them. And I just wondered, can people bring their own furniture into the cell as well? Yeah, yeah. So we, one of the designs I showed you, we try to accommodate as best as we can. But people do bring some items to personalise their room. So that is common thing.
Okay.
I'm guessing that you aren't wanting them to go into the detail of the pre-application because of what prejudice is you're on. I mean, there's no reason why the rest of them also can't hear a little bit more about the town if you step on the roof.
Well, you, you, the planning of Hexham Town Council is also going to, could, you... You will get the planning application through the Planning and Infrastructure Committee of the Hexham Town Council. So the detail of the planning application, which is yet agreed, will go there.
Okay, but is it, I would thought as a part of the pre-application consultation, be reasonable to explain to us what their thinking was, but...
Yeah, but so this is about the generalities of like Hadrian, of like understanding Hadrian Healthcare as to what they do and how they do it. Do you have any questions for it to have?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to ask just in the generalities of your staff, because every care home is dependent on the staff that look after the people that are there. Certainly, I'm aware in Hexham predominantly, a lot of the people that work in the care homes come from Newcastle, are from the better black or Asian culture, and they have to take the bus. So certainly, I'm wondering, do you pay a living wage to these people? Do you look after the staff? And do you consider if they're having to have to take journeys to your care homes, do you build that in? Because certainly Hexham's quite a way out in Newcastle. The bus station is quite a way away from a lot of places.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's a really important part, you know. We always, yeah. One of the key points is first of all identifying the right people who would be suitable for a position. And we've operated in areas where people have had to travel and you have to put them into remuneration. Naturally becomes part of the salary or the wage rate. And so we, you know, this is why we pick certain areas where we can operate because we know we can offer our service. And if we can offer the service how we, in light of that proposition, we can make sure that we can pay people that live on wage. And that naturally, and on top of that, it's working in a great environment. It's having career progression. It's having support. All that forms part of the overall remuneration package. But the rate is always important and enough to cover travelling costs. We'll build that in certainly.
Suzanne?
Yeah, I can't ask you, obviously. But yeah, it looks lovely. The sign that went up also looked lovely on the site. In choosing Hexham, did you, did you gauge a need? Was there something in our housing that needs?
So for example, in Hexham, there's 229 care home beds in Hexham. Of those 229 care home beds, the most recent one is the one that's built, the 76-bed care home that's built by the hospital, that's operated by HC1. And in total, there's only six or the seven of seven en suites with a shower of the 229 beds.
So you, so you even got a need for that?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah. I mean, you know, it's, our business model has to work in the area that we pick. And, you know, this area and the surrounding area has an aging population. The over 85s form just over 5%. And the national average of over 85s is about 2.6%. So this area has an aging population anyway naturally. And it needs to have more accommodation, more choice. And we're just part of that choice, whether that's apartments where people can have supported living or where you're coming into a care home or eventually a nursing home. We're part of the various options that are available. And that's, that's quite an increased need here in this area.
Yeah, very high potential option.
Yeah, I suppose kind of following on from that. Do you typically prioritise local people then within your care homes?
Generally, people will come from the local area generally. So it's interesting when you look at where are people coming from? Let's take our care home at Gosforth. There are people who are in the surrounding area. But then there's people who have moved a fair bit of distance because they want to be closer to their children. So their children happen to live, say, for example, might be living in Hexham, but they might be living elsewhere and to come closer, they could move. So you get a mix really. We, we don't, it's based upon, it's hard to be able to say, look, you know, how do you prioritize local people? Because naturally, the need is, you know, how far do you take the boundary here? I mean, if you look at Hexham, population's about 12,000, roughly speaking. But if you then take in a five-mile drive, a drive time, a five-mile radius, that goes to 20. And that's still local, that's all part of the pipeline, isn't it?
Yeah.
Just going back to the point that Mike made earlier. Hexham's an affluent town, but there are pockets of deprivation. These Hexhams got quite a lot of poverty. I was really interested in what you were saying about kind of training of local people to take on some of the roles within the care home. I'm just wondering if you've got any examples where you've done that and you've been able to recruit people that perhaps hadn't previously been interested in care?
Yeah, well, this is where it'd be great for you to come to one of our, like, we've got two care homes now. I just wanted to clear up the Roundhead one and Skipton ones that are referred to. We sold those to Anchor and Overgroup, and we don't operate those. And that's why I didn't know what their fees, fees would be. But our care homes in the north-east are the Gosforth and Wickham care homes. And Hexham is going to add to that, and that's, we're going to keep. But if you come along and speak to some of the peoples, our staff, you'll see that there's, it's interesting, when you open a new care home and we'll be taking on 80 to 90 different people, there'll be some people who are very experienced in care, and they're great. And there'll be some people who have done some level of qualification, and we can support that, support them to get to an NVQ level two, which we've done, we've got lots of examples of that. Then, once they've got two years' experience, we'll start to encourage them to do a level three, NVQ level three, and that is a senior carer, where you take more responsibility. And then there's people who, who come across with very good experience, but they've got that motivation to be involved in care. And so you have a mix of different skill sets. And that's the way to try and, the gentleman, Mike, you mentioned about, you know, bringing people from Newcastle. If we can get people local, that helps everybody. So we do have an incentive to focus on that.
Right, come, yeah, one more question.
Just generally as a healthcare group, what are your environmental and sustainable aspirations?
Yeah, well, interestingly, it's a great position to be in when you're building something new because you can start from scratch. You know, if you've got an older building, what, what do you do? With Andrew, you can see our focus in terms of, you know, getting renewables into the building as much as we can. We've done PV panels, haven't we, very recently?
Moving on to heat pumps now. But we reuse ventilation systems that recover heat from the exhaust. Pretty much put in everything we can put in. Because you're looking, looking sort of 50 years into the future and trying to sort of guess what it's, what it's like. We've just gone through a sort of a heat wave, and we're making our buildings more and more airtight and better and better insulated. But that's creating, that's making our turn in the summer. So what do you do about that? Your ventilation is then fighting it. So you're trying to sort of second guess what the, what the future is. And the building length is just the lowest common denominator. So you've got to work up from that. All of the buildings that we've done recently have the A rating for that.
Yeah, we'll be targeting an EPC equivalent of an A, you know, without doubt.
An A rating is how we look?
Yeah.
As a minimum, really.
Yeah, as a minimum, yeah. Because that then gives us some protection for the future. That rating, what tends to happen is sometimes, for example, we might get an A today, and in five years, they might change the goalposts. So you want to be at the top end of the A to try and keep in the A. But that's really important to us. And starting from scratch, you've got all the...
But this is just a snapshot of what it is sort of now though. You can sort of guess various things and go in fact, go as far as you can. I mean, for example, this is fine English. We're almost over 100 stone for this building. Stone's a sustainable material, much better than brick, if you can get the thing locally. So, you know, yes, we do go into sort of possibly reclaims, right? Possibly reclaims, right? We don't know yet, but, you know, we, in the past, we've done reclaim sites. So it's pretty much, it's fabulous opportunity from where we are now.
Right, so we'll stop then. Right, so thank you for that, which I just, I just threw a rabbit just to ask you a question. So thanks for that, and thanks for concentrating too for, sorry for every comment. Yes, I was trying to concentrate there and keeping it, keeping it within a constraint. So pre-application and then an application will come via to the Hexham Town Council Planning and Infrastructure Committee for observation. And then it goes to the Northumberland County Council for the same. So I was going to ask, so obviously, this has got significant interest right across the town for, not only for, for our... the town for, not only for, for a building, but also for other things, you know, including the, I think it's about potential employment, really good, good observations, and obviously the, the, the sustainable development credentials, et cetera. Some interesting figures there, let's say 5% of the population is 85 or older, you know, and that's an extreme figure compared to the rest of the nation, which is half that, so, 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 so interesting things. So I was, I was going to ask or certainly suggest or maybe for you to consider, would you be, would you be willing to do some sort of public engagement on this? We have had organisations in the past who, for example, may have hired the Emirates Lobby to the Queen's Hall, which is just across the way here, where they would do a day of like showing their application of like what the detail is and what they're into, and it just gives the public that engagement to, to really look at your application, maybe ask some questions, maybe have some observations about certain things, but would, you know, you may want to consider that as you, as you develop your application.
Yeah, 100%.
Very much do that, but we've been doing it for, to be honest. We've done it in a couple of ways, we've had sort of meetings like this for the public coming, which haven't been so effective because people that don't shout up, can't chat to just an eye or whatever. The more successful ones is exactly what you've said, hire, hire venues, say you have to be there for the whole day, do an house shot, everyone down there. And then also give a contact where either risk or the organisation is approachable, so you can see what we're, what we're doing. Normally we do that after we've had a response for a pre-application, we're going to report where we are at that on the moment, but, you know, we're doing that to see if you're actually in for planning, you want the feedback from, you said, the local community to understand what you are doing because you know, you see something that you've missed or you don't feel the stuff you're doing.
You see this as a step, you know, this is part of that steps. This is like...
Yeah, we, we see this, just as an introduction, the next step for us, depending on any response from the discussions, is how we then sort of present it back against the remit before an application goes in.
And also, and also in due course like to invite the town council to come across to Gosforth and then if I'm, you know, it kind of reinforces the message I'm trying to portray here of what our organisation's mindset is and how we operate in a community. And you can, you can see and listen to that firsthand.
Okay, right, hopefully you should call me the name there, it's all good, thank you. Okay, so if you just want to talk, we'll just continue a minute. Okay. Thank you, thank you. Any free apologies perhaps? Any disclosure of interest? I'm going to, disclosure of interests? No. No. Dispersions? No. Right, and public participation, Barry, would you, would you be interested in publicly participating?
Thank you.
Absolutely, please take it. I see you expecting a storm at sea there, Barry.
Old boy scout, be prepared. I don't think I could manage these £3,000 a month at over 85, mate. Thank you, Mr Barry. I would much appreciate if it could be explained to me what happens to questions that are asked at the monthly town council meeting but cannot be resolved at the meeting. Does the council communicate directly with Northumberland County Council or does a town council member attend a meeting of the county council and raise the subject then? If a member is delegated to raise the question at the county council meeting, I would much appreciate if they titled the meeting and the date it is convened, so that maybe if they follow its progress and even attend if possible as a member of the public.
Right, so the county council's running a new system in which they've just introduced where the questions go to the members, elected members, such and such. We are now in a position where it will be logged and they will then take that and then you should get an answer to that question. It won't necessarily be asked at a, at a meeting because you may just go, can you fill that pop hole please? Or it may be just something very vague or very just simplistic. Or if it's something more complicated, potentially could be asked at a meeting.
What you're saying is the town council would decide to maybe delegate to a member if they think it's relevant, relevant to put to the county council?
Well, the town council can put the question to itself as well, so the clerk may, may do that as well.
All right. It's just so if you could say which meeting that would go to.
It wouldn't necessarily go to them.
So how do we find out what happens to the question?
So if you, if you ask the question about, what about this pop hole, that is not going to go to a meeting?
No.
Because that's just a matter of procedure where the...
So I might have to be lucky to say my question gets asked.
Well, it depends what the question is, of course. So if the question was, if the question was around what's happened to the Hecton Middle School with the building of the new housing, et cetera, well, that's going to go to one of the planning committees when that planning application goes in. So it would all depend on the nature, the depth, et cetera, of the question. What I will tell you is that we, the county council has had, in the past, hopefully local area committees, so there was a Tindale Local Area Committee. The council's now going to change that to something called Community Partnerships and there will be a Tindale Community Partnership Meeting. That is currently going under arrangements to get that into place in the coming months. And that's a public meeting, but I think the county council's recognised it is not very good at involving the public and is trying to improve that by a rebadging and a reconstitution of that, of those committees, so expect being... I think, I think it is very important that the choice of subject at those meetings is, is, is the most current and most relevant thing and that will get people to call if it's not something that people are bothered about at all. That being Suzanne.
Yeah, I mean, over the years that I've been here, you've asked some great questions. And whenever it's been something like the beacon being hit or the drains in Vanquor, I've always either fed back to you on the phone after the meeting or an email or feedback in this meeting. I know your last question was about the toilets, which we're just bothered to the email of and it's not gone any further, but it, I can see what you mean, there's a kind of protocol that's missing for you to be able to know and that relies on us to kind of directly really feed back to you and I hope we've been good on that front, a bit slow on other ones. But yes, your questions are always moved upwards or along to the depot.
By some, some means or other.
Yes, well, usually by me, the clerk, Derek, whoever's actioning it, to take it, whoever wanted to see it, will action it.
I was just curious how I would find out.
Well, it would just be direct, by direct feedback from me as the member taking your query, okay, then getting the response and then feeding back to you, so.
Right, so you've sent us an email or something?
Or that, you went up to the drains.
Or even...
There are some questions, Barry, that you ask, which you can get an answer for almost immediately from the people sitting around the table. There are others, however, which you don't appear to get an answer for. And it would be nice to know what happens to those questions. So can I suggest that as well as public participation is on the agenda, we have another section which refers to the question that was asked in the previous full town council meeting. Andrew will have made a note of your question, Barry, and presumably someone will be busy themselves trying to find the answer. Well, for the next full council meeting, wouldn't it be nice to know how they were busy themselves getting your answer? And indeed, they might not have managed to, but at least you will know that there were some steps being taken. Or we might be able to give you the answer a month later. But I think it should be recognised that people ask questions and what those questions are, have you given an answer?
Okay, thank you, Barry, much appreciated. Anything?
Just a general question really, so just fix my street still up, right? So do you know about Fix My Street?
Yes, well, I, when it first started, I sent something about the drains being blocked and this was about four years ago and there's no one ever looked at them since.
Right, so I think that that's another thing about accountability, so, so I think it's the judgment for you to kind of say, I'd written to Fix My Street four years ago and then on any of that, and then we should be chasing water. So it's a sort of circular conversation, hopefully that we break the cycle.
I was on for a long time, I was asking about the drains being, but there's vegetation, you see, or go like that.
Well, what I would say is Fix My Street has not been going for years.
Sorry?
I would say Fix My Street has not been going for years.
Well, when it ever started.
It would be going a couple of years, but I, I think it's more report my street rather than fix my street.
Sorry about the terminology.
No, I just think it would be a better type of word.
Right, I have a little query, the second one, it's about the cemetery flags. There's been a little bit of controversy on lately, I see. And I was, and it was just saying, who and what regulations determine which type of flags are allowed to be flown in the cemetery? I was told recently that the cemetery was broken into and a pride flag stolen and the flagpole damaged. I understand the Newcastle United flag has also been flown in the cemetery. As the cemetery is of a semi-religious environment with people of various religions buried there, I'm in the opinion if a flag is to be flown there, it should be more appropriate to the location, such as the Union flag. As the cemetery is on the fringe of the town, it may, may be more suited to fly flags where more people can see and appreciate them, such as the park or the seal.
Right, so it is the, it is the power of the town council to decide the flag flying. The town council has flown the Union Jack, has flown the Ukrainian flag, when we had our Ukrainian guests who first joined us after the invasion, to make them most welcome. We've flown the English flag to, to, and currently have that flying because of the sporting adventures of the English Ladies' Corporalty, the Lionesses. We have flown, as you rightly say, the Newcastle United flag because of the success of the club. So there's been various flags flown. The pride flag was flown in recognition of Pride Month and as you rightly point out, somebody entered illegally the cemetery and decided to cut that flag down and the associated ropes. That's been, that's a criminal damage and that is now being reported to the police for their investigations. But it is the power of the town council to decide what flies or does not fly. I bring in Penny.
I think that's quite an interesting question that you're raising, Barry, but the point that I think is that quite unusually, the town council offices apart of the cemetery. So I appreciate your sensibilities, but I think that there's another dimension to it, i.e. that this is, that is our physical place that represents interests and ideas and dynamism, I would say, of the town council, it's not just a cemetery. So that's, I'm not making any point, I'm just raising that as another aspect to how, how it has arisen. I think it was solely a cemetery with a flagpole in it, that wouldn't have happened probably, I don't know, you know, I can't say for certain, but it's the fact that that's our home and that's where we operate out of. So there's another angle to it.
So, so I read Suzanne.
Yeah, so the county council also does this, it has three flagpoles that it changes them depending on the month or Ukraine to show support. So as part of the community engagement, we want to sort of signal to the community that we're, we are inclusive. So the first one, I think we bought, the only one we bought was the Remembrance one, Remembrance Day, because there's a lot of war graves in the cemetery and that was appropriate for our community engagement, for the Remembrance Committee that are on and the events that we now do. And then there was a succession of putting them up for Neom coming over or Lexington coming over or, and private, it was, it was part of our sort of community engagement reach out really, so we're an inclusive and very sort of forward leaning town council and I like that we represent all flags, not just some of them. And if anyone has a special request, please do, obviously then, yeah. Obviously after that's through by committee, but it's, it's a case of, we'd just like to show our support for the community in different ways and it's a colourful and symbolic way of doing that. And it's quite, it's quite powerful, we get a lot of good feedback from it, we get a lot of, yes, some, well, not a lot of, some bad feedback from it, obviously. And this was trespassing, criminal damage, no matter what the flag was, and that was wrong, so, you know, that's...
So is there a committee decides this?
Community engagement is the whole of the, of what it represents.
Yeah, so this, half a dozen people decide which flag goes up or something like that?
Well, it's the council's...
The council is a group, yes, yes. Right, I think that might, so long as Hamas don't know what the flag flying.
My apologies to that, that is an awful thing to say, I'm really disappointed with you saying that, that would not go in there. Any more questions?
No, I'm ready.
Right, thank you, Barry, thank you.
I'm not fully allowed to.
Right, thank you, thank you, thank you. Right, minutes of the, of the last meeting, please. Right, so if we go to Minister of the Full Council of the 9th of June 2025. Permission to stay for 10 minutes? John?
There is something missing from the full council minutes, and that is my request for Councilor Sester to come and talk to us or write a report. And I wonder if, I think I know the answer to this, Andrew, have you contacted Councilor Sester and did you get an answer? What was his answer, please? You could summarise it.
Yeah, well, it's not very long, are we getting? Hi Andrew, I'm happy, my original request was, dear chairman, following a recent town council meeting, I've been asked to contact you to discuss how effective means of communication may be established between yourself and the town council. A particularly interest was the progression stroke updates on potential development sites in town, many of which are in your ward, please pardon the standards, whatever. It was suggested that you could give verbal or written updates at the full council meeting on any NCC business that you consider it to be of benefit to the town council to be made aware of. If there is any information that you would like from the town council on a regular basis, do let me know. And the response was, hi Andrew, I'm happy to answer questions on individual items whenever I'm asked and whenever there is anything to say. And he's gone through a number of the, the development sites to give some, some feedback. Toilets, I've been on to NCC requesting that all toilets given stink clean and if possible a regular schedule for the future as in Reed. I believe initial services have been asked to carry this out. West Road, what do you want to know about this? Police houses, my information that these have been sold. Union Workhouse up for sale, Shambles, as ongoing as can be seen. Cyclops path worth work for started. Had a sausage, I've been, we all have a clinic, I've been in touch with enforcement who say the work is ongoing, albeit incredibly slow and that planning wise, something to be done.
Are you requesting something be added for the minutes? Or... Permission to stay, please, everybody? Thank you. Right, so move on. So now move on to consider a motion. So to consider a motion concerning the Union Workhouse site raised by councillor Roger Higgins. So the motion is, Roger, bring that in. But just before everybody starts, so you will have on your here a little guideline as to how a motion actually works. So this is really, really helpful. So the motion is proposed by, in this case, councillor Roger Higgins. And it is then required for a second that, to second that motion. Now, if you second it, it doesn't mean you actually agree with it or you actually support it. It just allows it to go through again to allow a debate to take place. So a debate would then take place. It is normal for the debates to take place and then, as you can see there, the right of reply by the mover of the motion. So that Roger, in this case, would wait until everybody's spoken. So he would read the motion. Everybody who wants to participate would have a say. As we get to the end of that, Roger would then have the right of reply as the mover of the motion and sum it all up. It then goes to the vote, so it's a short hand, so it's a vote for, against, or an abstention. So I am now going to pass over to Roger Higgins to read out the motion.
Great, thank you, Chair. Just to wave back down, I had this in the light of a representation of last month's meeting by resident Wendy Reech. He was speaking partly for behalf of Hexham Community Housing Group regarding the former workhouse, which is sitting over, planning approval dated back to twenty nineteen for conversion to residential, but which was acquired by the Seventy Ninth Group, which was a company that specialised in development of distressed assets. But there's blood to be, of how they've been investigated by the City of London Police for potential fraud and the flats have bankrupted and buildings now in the hands of the receivers being marketed. So what I wanted to do was to prepare some text that would allow us to, as a council, if you were minded, to show our support for a potential acquisition of the site for more constructive purposes, potentially community led housing, rather than just being lapped back by the developers. They might pick it up from the receiver. So here we go. Motion of support to acquire the former workhouse, Corbridge Road, Hexham. Knowing the continuing saga of Hexham's former workhouse, which occupies a very prominent gateway of site in the Hexham and is at the eastern edge of Hexham's conservation area, Hexham Town Council urges the leadership and officers at Northumberland County Councils to use their powers to prevent further deterioration of the building and to safeguard it for future conversion and reuse in broad accordance with previous planning permissions nineteen stroke one three eight oh full, which include partial demolition, refurbishment, the extension of the Hexham Union Workhouse buildings into thirty four flats. Hexham Town Council's understanding of the acute need for affordable housing suggests a preference for a hundred percent affordable housing, shared ownership or social housing for rent on this site. Given the current marketing aside by the appointed receivers of the Seventy Ninth Group, which is the criminal investigation performed by the City of London Police, we request that the leader, the chief executive, along with the head of planning, convene a meeting at the earliest opportunity with a view to the acquisition of the site and its development for affordable housing, utilizing the existing buildings. This meeting should include the aforementioned of NCC along with the town councillors, Hexham Community Led Housing, Hexham Civic Society and Tindale County Councillors. We would support an approach to the architectural heritage fund as well as Homes England to draw down some of the thirty nine billion pounds allocation for housing, sorry, for social housing, allocated between twenty twenty six and twenty thirty six to address this critical issue in the heart of Hexham. We urge NCC to convincingly explore acquisition of the site to achieve these objectives, yours et cetera.
Right, so I'm a little confused by this as a matter of procedure because what is written on the agenda is to request that NCC convene a meeting with strategic partners at the earliest opportunity with a view to the acquisition of the site and its development of the affordable housing, utilize the existing buildings down. So I'm going to turn the clock here and say, the motion that's written on here, because what's being said is not necessarily the same thing.
For brevity on the agenda, that's there. I believe that what's on the agenda is an accurate summary of the longer one that Roger's read out and encapsulates the key points.
Okay, so you're content with that?
I'm content.
Right, okay, I just wanted to just make sure because certainly that's not been my understanding as that word is. Right, okay, so that motion is being proposed. So thank you to councillor Higgins or Roger Higgins for proposing that motion. Is there a second for that motion? Right, so Stephen Moore was the second. So I will now open that up for debate. Who is to the top?
Yeah, I want to support the motion, quite wholeheartedly. And I think the meeting with the various stakeholders, with NCC, with the relevant Tindale County Councillors is a good first step to making some kind of progress on affordable housing on that side.
Okay, mine?
Just my chair's anything, I agree with Tom. Just, sorry, excuse my, it's a matter of just how much influence does the actual town council have with Northumberland County Council when it comes to issues of planning like this?
Good question. I don't know how to really, I don't know how to answer that question with you.
So I would say that because Roger's put this in a coherent argument with the cost thing and putting the right people, the local groups, NCC, it's almost like he's, we've formulated it in a way that they can kind of take it forward. And I can see that, but we're all, obviously, we don't have the money, we can't tell NCC what to do. But he's put a very good vehicle to try and move it forward.
Okay, I suppose I'm saying, how's it worked in the past? Because that's obviously the only way of judging how influential.
So I don't, I don't, I don't answer that, you know, it's to see how, which is the moment, there is. Right, I want to read John's, and I think we've done it.
With, sorry, with normal planning permission, it'll come to the town council with us statutory consorties. That's all. No one, no one may take any notice of us. We're just one amongst many. That's with normal planning permission. But I think as representatives of the people of Hexham, they ought to be damn well listening to us more than they do. Let's try.
I wasn't trying to be. No, 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 I think that was such a, I think it's such a pure question, just being on that. Oh, I answered it, it's a very, very good question.
I mean, where it's come up in the past, when it goes to planning finally, which I chaired for the last couple of years, it is given quite a bit of weight if the town council are invited to speak and what they say is taken into consideration, especially if they object to what's going through. So it is listened to. We can do more to make them listen, like we did with our survey on the middle school sites. And we felt they were ignoring us, so we ran away. So there's different ways about it, it's a brave motion. I like it because it's brave. And however, can I just ask, we're not asking for it to be handed back to NCC, NCC to buy it or refuse, you know.
Well, NCC, we've never had it to the best of our knowledge. I think what the motion is saying is that NCC is a potential vehicle acquisition of it with, because it is the appropriate body to acquire it with what funding achieved through bodies like Homes England. And they'd be the body that would be in a better position to deliver it.
To pressure them to steer it towards an affordable housing provider rather than, because I would be very reluctant for NCC's state team to add to their portfolio. You know what happens there, it can kind of reach a, as we see at the bus station, everyone's getting their management site. So that's my, sorry, I'm just asking why, I'm not sure about the motion yet. Because I am reluctant to give NCC that power within a site town. So it's just come on the market for eighty thousand, literally in the last two weeks. So it's, it's a case of, like what happened to Prospect House, seeing then what happens, because presumably there might be people interested, developers who can actually, it's quite something to restore, isn't it really? Like a fell site building, it's going to require a huge investment of cash. It's not going to be just pimper up and paint the walls. It's a huge project. So it is a case of, I think we probably have to see how long it sits on the market for, which sounds awful. It sounds like another waiting game, but it has just come on the market. So I'd be reluctant, definitely.
Right, okay, right. Go, have to go back to the motion here, but we've got to be very, very careful that we do not, that's a constraint here about how this works. So the motion is to request NCC to convene a meeting with strategic partners, no more, no less. It's not saying you go and buy this NCC or you go and do this somebody else. It is about, it's about convening a meeting as a first step. So that's what we're talking about here, not about somebody saying, put your hand in your pocket, purchase this for eight hundred thousand pounds. It is not that, it's about convening a meeting, is that?
Well, in that case, it's important.
To be fair, does there with a view to acquisition?
Well, but it doesn't say, sorry, it didn't say.
By, by, exactly, exactly.
I think Homes England, whoever, be able to form a.
A co-minister, yeah.
Which might require a site.
So let's, so this is about having a conversation for this one. Right, so I've got Stephen.
I think it's a bigger question, you know, I think it's a question of, we're being rolled over as a town council by developers. You've only got to look at the bus station as a prime example of nobody taking any notice. So I think with this, with that base, it's just a statement of fact that we're not prepared to sit back and let developers, whoever they are, whether they're doing nice presentations with glossy magazines or anybody else, to come into this town and tell us what they want. And it's just a question of putting a line in the sand and saying, we're going to monitor all the way and we're going to press our elected leaders, whoever they are, to have influence over bigger elected leaders to make sure that we get the best for Hexham. And this is just another case in question that, you know, Hexham is such, is not prepared just to let developers come into this town and willingly develop it at their will. That they'll be scrutinized, they will be, everything will be contested, whether it's access or is there a need for housing, you know, housing as such, whether it's post-residential homes. You know, we've got an argument here that we need sustainable homes in Hexham. We need a vibrant town centre. This is just a case in question of saying the town council is going to monitor and check at every point that you do, you say what you're going to do, and that's why I'm saying, yeah, Roger.
Penny?
Right, so I don't want to be difficult. I'm slightly worried about the motion because it forgets into specificity that I think gives the county council an opt-out because they can just say, well, we can't do that, so the whole thing falls. So I'm worried about that, I quite like the summary that the caucus has provided. But I also wonder about why it's NCC. I think we should pressurize on NCC and we should do it all the time. But why don't we convene a meeting of interested parties? Why don't we say, we've got an affordable housing group, we've got an ambition to have small social housing. I'm not saying that we buy the site, that's not what I'm saying. But instead of passing the power of exploring this to NCC who have got their own agenda because they're totally strapped for cash, why don't we do it? We've got the players locally, we're talking about a local action, why don't we convene a meeting and come up with some proposal? That's my question to Roger.
You can, but Roger, you're someone up at the end, Roger, so just make a note of that, that you're going to do everything at the end. So, no, it's all, it's all a game now.
Yeah, I'm happy about that.
I really like us to be the driving force, but I think there's a question about whether we don't have the power to buy that site or the finance, so I don't know, you know, if NCC is just simply we're using them as a vehicle to move forward that acquisition process.
Mike?
As long as it's legal, as long as we do something that's legal, there's nothing to stop the town council if it wants to to go through the process of applying for the funding. I'm doing it, so I've thrown town council ten years ago, had a ten year waiting list for a lot of us. They realised that, so they went out, took some money, bought the land and cleared their waiting lists. And a Corbridge, it's often small now, has four social houses that the developer gave them and they're managing that. And this is a bigger, much, much bigger agreement, but legally, there's nothing, as long as it's legal, town council could do it if we've got the information.
I'll bring Penny in.
So, sorry, I think I've been misunderstood. I'm not suggesting that we buy the site. I'm suggesting, if you look at the summary, that we convene that meeting, that we don't give the, we don't say to county council, will you please do it on our behalf? Why don't we convene the meeting? I'm not saying that we buy anything or we borrow millions of pounds. I'm saying that we bring those parties together ourselves because then we'd be in a position to establish what there is and what the climate is in the town. And then we say to NCC, right, this is what the town wants with this building, rather than giving them the gift of convening everything, which has fallen down a pole probably.
Presumably you can do both, I mean, that'd be a good report. But I support Roger's motion, I think it's important to keep Hexham and these kind of light sites on the in tray of the chief exec and of the leader of council. And there's all this extra money nationally for social housing and Hexham should be front and mind for that. So I think I'd be pretty supportive, so.
Anybody else? So, right, so I mean, one of the things I would say is like, well, we've got this Hexham Community Housing Group, which has been around for three, four years now. And I've never seen anything, you know, we haven't seen anything delivered by that, by that organisation. And I just don't understand why that group's constituted if it's not delivering. Is this not the type of opportunity that that group is constituted to do? Otherwise, what does it do? We've had, seen nothing in a portfolio of what has delivered. They did come and speak to the town council the last year, maybe, or the year before. But other than talking, would there be plans or what its intentions are to actually express? Would it not be wise for, you know, we've seen somebody to lead a meeting of some sort? And I think you've mentioned them in your motion, Roger, as well as, would, is that not, will then take that? Because what's our objectives if it's not the case? So, right, everybody's spoken now. We are now going to move into the next part of the rules of debate, which is the right of reply by the mover of the motion. So I'll now introduce Roger, who will, you know, I'm sure you made a list of questions being asked and just maybe consider each one.
Great, thank you. Thank you for all the positive comments there. An answer to one of your concerns, I think Derek regarding the housing group. I'm not intimately involved with it, but they were involved in the site of potential acquisition of a site on Market Street, which they've never really progressed because of planning difficulties, but understood it. So, you know, they have attempted to move forward with the project. And I think what they would see themselves as being is part of that package that might. And I think what they, what they would see themselves as being is, is part of that package that might, with the agencies, Homes England, ourselves, the county council, help deliver that site. I think it's probably a bit of a big fish for them to fly on their own. And then to Penny's point, yes, I think it'd be great if HCC convened this, but I think we're actually in a fallback position if we didn't get any evidence from NCC. I think we, you know, the, the authority with the officers and the connections, you all would be able to draw in funding sources and talk about how you could create and pull the package together to bring that site into affordable housing use. If they did go with anything, yes, I think that's something that HCC could press forward. But I think the first step would be drawn into the attention of their chief executive leader.
Okay, thank you. Yep, thank you, right. So, um, you've all, so, so I'll just summarise that motion there. NCC to request that North London County Council convene a meeting with strategic partners, which includes all, all those I've been saying, you know, the Hexham Town Council, the Hexham Community Housing Group, uh, et cetera. The earlier's opportunity with a view to the acquisition of the site, not necessarily who that, that acquirer, acquirer is, and is developing for affordable housing, utilising the existing buildings. Um, so that is the motion. We now go to the vote, so I'm now going to ask for those who are in favour to raise their hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Okay, thank you. So, um, so the court will now endeavour to take that action forward and look at you, obviously, to your, to your, Roger, you'll be in the lead of course on that one.
Hexham Coran's a really poor newspaper in terms of delivering news stories. I know we've got pay here from Hexham TV, but this should be on the front page of the Coran. And one of the jobs that we should do is to promote this as an issue with the Coran. And so the town council see this as a very important issue and a good campaign on behalf of it. That's my first starting point.
Right, so, so we've finished that, we've had that motion, that's finished, so we're now going to item number nine. So to consider a motion concerning the station cottages, goods shed and water towers site raised by councillor Dominique. So the Hexham Town Council is increasingly concerned over the deteriorating state of the above mentioned properties located south of Hexham Station and owned by the Arch Company. So it is to, to request that Hexham Town Council engage with the Arch Company to get to the site. So again, we're going to go through, through that, so I'm going to hand over to Mike to, just to read, read your motion now.
Yeah, thank you, I'll keep your chair. Um, just for, just for those that don't know where it is, I'm sure you do, but that's just the picture I took of the building with the door kicked in. So, yeah, just to go through what, um, the office has said, so basically, Hexham Town Council, council increasingly concerned over the state of these, uh, these buildings, which is in a very prominent position, everybody drives past it right next to the train station. Um, and it's owned by the Arch Company. And if you look at the building, you've got no idea who owns it. So it took me a bit of fishing around to actually find out who actually owned it. Um, and my request is that town council engages with the Arch Company who have, um, six thousand assets, who Network Rail gave all of their arches to, who have put on work around London, um, to explore, basically to explore mechanism, to address the neglect of these builders, because in that current state, there's all kinds of things that could happen to that building.
Right, do we have a second of that motion? Uh, so on page John Hope was standing, standing hand up there. So we are now going to do exactly the same, we are going to go to debate with, um, Mike Dominique having the right reply, the end of the discussion. Right, debate, who, who is the supporter of this meeting?
I brought this up right at the beginning of the session before the elections. It's hard to know, actually, um, you know, this is one way you have to get people like the local MP, for example, to, to campaign and to work with others. But again, it's just another case of people rolling us over and doing nothing. So unless we, we lead a campaign and get other prominent people to be part of it, um, and prominent individuals to be part of it, we, we, it's going to go down the black hole, as we've spoken about before. Well, we wish you well with this one, Mike.
Yeah, that's my concern as well, as brave as it is, now that brave motions. Uh, this is Blackstone, Blackrock, America, fought it. You should see what they're doing to housing over there, the land bank, there's nothing moving, that's on a, it's, it's on an international scale, this company. But I'm, I'm happy to have a, have a report and my, my sling and fight their giant, if you, if you're up for it. But it is huge, but making you stink and getting you front page and actually doing a local protest is not the wrong thing at all.
Anybody else? Okay, Tom.
I just wonder if everyone is fully aware of, um, the architectural and historic value of the goods shed and the water tower. We're lucky here in Hexham, we've got a, one of the oldest railway stations in the world. I think it was eighteen thirty-two when the line was open.
Second oldest, second oldest stage.
Thank you. And the goods shed is an absolute gem, uh, the kind of infrastructure that was built in downstairs. It's still got the internal workings apparently, though I haven't been there enough to see them. Um, and there are people who are fascinated by this sort of stuff. And if it was made into a railway museum, there's all sorts of opportunities to get even more tourists into Hexham if these things were brought back into proper use and were stabilised and looked after. And another thing that you might like to know is that when Jen Cavanna was the clerk, she wrote every month, or at least a year, to the Arch Company and never got an acknowledgement of her emails or her letters of colour. Yes, they probably are somewhere in America, not taking any notice of us. So we're going to have to shout really, really loudly, and I think this is an excellent starting point. We'll just shout about it as loud as we can and make a big splash.
Roger. Um, yeah, I just fully support it. But we do actually have the email from the press officer for the Arch Company now. So, uh, yeah, we're going to be letting it know this, we're going to.
One, one summer, yeah.
Purpose wise, but, you know, I think given the opportunity to go out and have a look at the buildings, they decided that, the one that looks pretty young, pretty possessed from the outside, the pedal dash, well, has the main name structurally impressed. The interior building is quite impressive, probably one that here we don't like to exist in. It was there still, uh, so, you know, I think we should do, I'm trying to get access, not too difficult in the cases, but.
Penny.
Uh, certainly, I just, um, I'd like to ask a question, but also draw everybody's attentions to the fact that Te Trisant Frantia did a huge piece of funded work on the goods shed because they wanted to acquire it as a performance space. So let's not reinvent the wheel, but let's actually read that before any meeting. I mean, I think the strike is that there's two, two strengths to this. One is trying to get somebody to talk to, but being completely quiet with as much information as possible. So I don't expect an answer now, but I've raised that question about, um, the power of compulsory purchase, whether that is something that we should be looking at and learning about. So that any meeting that, that transpires, if we're lucky enough, then we know what our options are.
Well, that's not bad, okay, I mean, we know that they don't, they, you know, the thing we did with the bus station was the section two one five. And it's, that was going to be a constant lag and hopefully now it's going through. And we will keep doing it again until they clean it up annually, whatever. But it's like a thorn in the side, isn't it? And people, if you say we're going to actually do this legal action, and the council has done it now. So it's a case of them just doing it again and again to different sites. So we could, I suppose, push that one.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, we've talked before about naming and shaming people. Um, if we're having a front page Coran article, um, hopefully front page. I wonder if we can just keep that ticking over with all the sites that we identified as being, you know, um, a major issue and actually name the people who are just sitting on these sites, so that they become embedded in people's subconscious. And also that people know it's not us, because we get blamed for all the things that we don't have any control over. So I'll see that we are trying to do something, um, and that they will know who it is that's actually causing the problem. It's another.
Anybody else? Okay, I'll just, I'll just, I'll say a couple of words. Um, yeah, so, yeah, um, Hexham Railway Station is the second oldest railway station in the world still on its current site, um, preceded by Wyndham. So, so really, it's, it's a really historical part of the world of railways and, you know, jobs. Very rightly pointed out, there's a, there's a big lot of people out there who are pretty still of huge interest in, in the railways. And, um, you know, and it's, it's a, it's an absolute outrage that, um, those buildings around there have been left to decaying rotten, not, not be, not be used in any good fashion. I mean, you've seen the likes of the, um, one building that, that, that was used very, very well is, um, the, uh, the wine shop down next to the railway station, Majestic Wine, who actually used it old and converted that, that building into usable, um, from a commercial stick, they've done a fantastic job on that. Um, so, so it can be done. Um, Fay's quite rightly pointed out that this is not the first time that this has happened. Um, there was a lot of work done by, um, by that arts organisation to try and get it into some semblance of a, of a usable arts space. Um, lots, lots, lots of work done, nothing on that, but we didn't get anywhere. Um, and, you know, I, that's one thing, like, if anything that pains me is seeing idleness, really, really annoying me so much. Uh, when you go past there, you know, we're all trying to make Hexham look really nice, you know, it's like you can see people doing the flowers and, you know, the railway station looks nicer on there. And they did a quite lot of work to, to, you know, to be a better, uh, book post area. But then you, then you come out and you've got those, um, cottages in the goods shed and the water tower looking so decayed and unloved. So, right, you're now going to vote, um, councillor David Hall had the right to reply by the mover of the motion. And you just want to, you might want to just summarise, um, and then we go to the vote.
Yeah, I think everybody's in agreement that something needs to happen and also recognising that, as we said just before, by other councillors, I think, um, it, it, it certainly hit me because the door is wide open and nothing is happening to that properly. So, um, yeah, I think there was a last reply to it, I think it was in agreement, so.
Okay, so we now go to the vote, so, um, as I've mentioned before, there'll be votes in favour, votes against, and votes for abstention. Those in favour, please raise your hand, and that's a unanimous vote, so. So, but, right. Right, uh, to receive an update on the Hexham potential development sites, um, so I think there's a number of these already spoken about today. So I'll just take a selection, so, um, Hexham Middle School.
No updates.
Nothing updating, no bus station.
No.
Updates on that one. Toilets, no update on that.
Travel, travel, uh.
Ah, yes.
Uh, chase them on that in the queue then.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, West Road, um, it appears, um, um, some of the travellers have adopted that area of space for a short time. And you'll see a number of horses being, uh, sort of posted along the West Road. I have been in touch with county council, ask what is actually going on there and length of times, et cetera. So I'm still waiting on a response for that. Uh, but I have had several emails from residents asking about what is going on.
So, so there was some concern over the horses, within the heat, the horses that just down on that.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, um, I did speak to the R T P C A about it.
Did you, right.
Yeah, and, um, they were very good actually, but obviously because basically the horses were okay, they have other priorities.
Yeah. That's a good point, but they.
But they did ring back and ask some questions about it. You know, they did look into it seriously, but.
Yeah, the site was mooted as a traveller stop place, overspilled at one point, but the, uh, migration officer, who might be working in touch with one of the, do you know, can C C?
Well, the trial and stop was still on that.
Are they?
Yeah.
He's very lovely.
And, right, police houses, well, an update on that. So, um, I had a message from the police, uh, police commission, police commission, prime, police prime.
Police.
Police, the prime commissioner along the, um, office, uh, obviously you know this, but maybe someone that's been vexed me for many a long year. Um, so they have actually, um, sold the site to a organisation called Anvil Homes. Now, I don't know any more information other than that. However, um, after eight years of those stand idle, it looks as though there is a potential solution in the market after all those years of nothingness, and I'll be coming.
Yeah, I, I just think it'd be worth noting that it's disappointing for the P C C to have sold that for maximum financial gain. And we've got some opportunity for affordable social housing on that site.
Yeah.
I have this question. Is that, is that an inevitable outcome? And can we not, as part of the planning process, continue to lobby for sustainable housing?
Yeah, I think we should not be for it.
So I, I just be careful about making statements such as that that's happened. We only know is that Anvil Homes have purchased the site. What happens to that site is, you know, you may have suspicions and you probably aren't correct. But I think we have to be careful about not making statements that are, that are maybe not factual yet, or certainly. I think, um, that has always been the measure of Hexham Town Council's ambition was to ensure that some sort of social housing was.
I'm trying to ask them on that, to talk to us if there is an opportunity.
Yeah, 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 we're doing that now. Well, once we get, get that confirmed, we'll, we'll get, we'll get on the call here. Uh, Union Workhouse, we spoke about that, Shambles, um, well, we know that that works ongoing, it started, um, and the work's ongoing.
Yes, I've had some complaints from people around the end of the market, who do something, saying the work is quite glacial, um, for the tour. I mean, the heat, that's in, but, uh, hello. Um, so I think we've got Hexham Hub this Thursday at four. And I wondered also on the back of that, had we, I know this kind of side question, had we nominated our town council rep on there yet? Because that was quite an out of the way to estates that we were.
Have we got one?
We did have, Penny was the last one, I remember, and it was my.
Oh, he's the mayor.
I'm on the man, I guess, is your one still?
I'm just wondering if it's with, like.
But I think we should, well, do you, do you want to ask them if, if, who is the mayor of that? Because it's.
Because it is kind of the eyes on to what's happening with developments in town. It would be good to have a town council up on there like we used to have.
Uh, can you, can you mail them just so we can just find out? Um, once we find out, will, 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 it's no decision on who will be, it'll be the town council has to decide. So, I mean, Tommy will probably dead interested, Roger, you would be definitely interested, although people may be interested, Penny.
Yeah, can I just, I, I'd just like to say, because I know that the upper meeting is happening, is that I, I was talking to Peter Sandler, some of the market traders this, this week, and, um, he says, um, between twenty and thirty percents loss, cost a piece for the traders. And I'm, don't treat the message up, just telling you that actually the relocation, all the rest of it's created problems for the, for the market.
I was talking to him about that on Saturday, because there had been a complaint where I was away from one of the traders, specifically saying the trade was down on that very, very rainy day. That he then invested hundreds of pounds in signage, bessum and marshals to get them to know, I think it is continuity. He's booked it, they're happy at the moment, because I'm on the, the board there, uh, they're happy they've booked out the next two or three sessions there, because they are quite content, but it's interesting to know that they are, they are trying ways around this, they know they need to continue to push it. And I will raise it on the, so.
Yeah, so the reason I raise it though is that first of all, it was as evidential as it could be, because he surveyed and people were talking to me about it. But the fact is that it needs to be a lever, a lever for this work to have to be completed as quickly as possible. Because the evidence is now being put on the market, trading to solve the problem, but actually the, the problem that was, i- is, is the construction that needs to be completed as soon as.
Yes, we need an end date for that to confirm on the building, that's what I've, I've.
I've got a date, probably on the schedule of works.
So, so just, just for councillors, just new councillors, just to give you the history. The county council wanted to start this work straight after the work in the heritage zone last summer. Myself and Suzanne and Trevor, I mean, I was alarmed at that and said, look, I, I don't want that work to happen straight after the heritage zone and then straight into the shambles, because I think that Hexham needed a breath after, after having all that work done. So, they agreed to that. We all asked and said, can you start that in the winter, as in January of twenty twenty five, so it would be completed for the summer of twenty twenty five. However, that has obviously been completely ignored and they didn't start until the summer season. And I think this is the, the bad wash of all of that. It's like the work had to get done, you know, taking, I mean, obviously winter is, is difficult, or taking roof tiles off and all that can be done in December, in January, in February, all they could have, they could have done, all the, the deconstruction in wait until the city able to do the construction. And I think it's really, really disappointing that they have chosen the wrong time to do this work.
And also, I also heard that there's a clash of scaffolding on the card shop, which is meaning access is not, and they, how that would be joined up thinking, I do not know, but that's certainly again what I guess on Thursday. Not, not so much, it's, it's getting in behind the shambles to do the work, so it's actually practical difficulties, because they didn't check who had permits for scaffolding in the market.
Terrible, shambles. Right, Rayland Building, we spoke about that, Western Methodist.
At the works site, it was fantastic, I chatted to the team, they're going to try to not hit Hexham when the headcoats work is going on, so they're going to stop it about woodlands. And then resume the work once the six weeks holidays are over and stop, stop elsewhere in the meantime, because they don't want to block up the centre of Hexham or make it to the bus station while that work's going on, so they're, they're really thinking about it. They're being very strategic, the plans for the first phase are going ahead, so they're starting in the middle this time and they're working out towards the hospital. And then the new plans are being drafted for phase two, which is the core bridge site, and they haven't quite hit the desk yet, but then they, they don't have to worry about that, because they've still got their Hexham parts to complete in the meantime, so that is progressing, they are on the lay-by, the signs are going up, all the cones are there and all the measures that we've asked for for pedestrians will be going into.
Susan, so there's no, sort of marketing the maps that are out on the website?
No, no, just half of them are finished. So, uh, yes.
There's no one asking about whether we've.
No, I know, I know.
So, I know we had that in James, so it'd be good to press it to get something out. No one knows where it's going.
Okay, Rayland Building, we spoke about West End Methodist, nothing to report on that. Robson Bean citing nothing to report on that. Prospect House, oh, that seems to be moving forward. Are they up for sale, is that right now? They are, no, not yet, yeah, but we have six activities going on there. Abbey Cottage, what's Abbey Cottage? Yeah, the old clinic, yeah, is that what it's called, Abbey Cottage, it's not called Abbey Cottage, is it?
Abbey House.
Is it?
Someone had an update on that, that was Travis.
Yeah, you mentioned that, yeah, so, right, okay, so last one. And, right, so Mayor's, yeah, right, right, so, right, Mayor's concerned, no particular order. We had, oh, thanks to all the councillors who attended the Blue Skies Thinking by this Hexham Town Council. This is a way of us envisaging what the priorities are for the next four years and what things we think we can achieve. So, that will, that's been currently logged and brought together in several understandable chunks and the council will then start, start to pull that together and put a plan together. Twenty second of June, On Your Bike took place in the marketplace. Big turnout, so, you know, everybody was excited around Hexham, seemed to be a very good success. Got me, I still get a bit alarmed by people not wearing cycle helmets, but that's just a thing that I have about that, it's just that I knew somebody who had had a very, very unfortunate accident by not wearing a cycle helmet and died from it, and that should not have happened. And I just think seeing people without helmets is not great, but well done, On Your Bike, they did a great job and I think, I think, continue going forward on that. I introduced Chris Kelly in straight at tape at the Hexham Bandstand Sessions, which continues to go from strength to strength, so that's really good. And on the ninth of July, I was invited to attend the Brownies, was it Brownies? At the Alhacker Site on the Allendale Road. It was the end of term, but it was also Thelma Brown, who is, has done fifty years of volunteering of the Brownies, fifty, unbelievable fifty years. And I know Thelma from years back, because my daughter, Natasha, used to go there, so I've, so I've seen that in action and so that was her final Brownies event and I was, you know, it's just, it's always like, you know, the bikes were coming, I thought like, no, God, no, you're just, it's the likes of her, you know, just their devotion to volunteering and helping people, just absolutely astonishing, so, so it was really nice to, to be, attend that and make a bit of a post of Thelma, because she's such a, such a lovely lady, yeah. So, that's really nice. Attended twenty eight years later with one of the stars of the movie, who actually is actually sitting in this meeting today. Yeah, that's great, that's great, that's great.
Seen it, like, it's true.
So, it's, it's, it's just fabulous that it, that it sort of showcases, obviously, the Northumberland and and obviously having, having people who have actually been part, part of it, fantastic, so well done, they're really good. Sort of mentioned police houses, Bin the Bots, Bin the Bots is a keep great tiny campaign. I was delighted to help Suzanne, if I did have a thought about that.
Oh, yes, yes, we've got, oh, we've run hot lunchtime last Thursday and we took the sand buckets that have been agreed in their community engagement to hand out to businesses to continue the campaign that was started in February by spreading the ground and eluding business owners and hospitality trades to the problem where it had been spotted in various sorts of hotspots around town. And we thought to help them out and give them supply of the sand buckets, apparently we're a game changer in the Thumland, in Morpeth specifically. That was the one thing that people responded to and they have, they're being well used, I've passed a few. I haven't used them myself, but like, they're there and, yeah, going for it, they're low good and we're handing more out, so we had a follow-up and four more businesses contacted us and said, yes, we'd really like them, so taking those round as well, so it's all good for their streets and their waterways, that's it.
Yeah, there's a cracking article in the Karant, oh, lovely Karant.
Some pictures, isn't it?
No, no, anyway, it was great, it was great, honestly, it was great speaking to all the, all the public, you know, it's so supportive. You know, they all said, yeah, that we really support the mission, we'll help as much as we can, and then we do know cigarette ends have been a big problem for us for years, that's good. Right, the Players' Own, so this is the, like, yeah, so that's gonna, so the Players' Own is the football pitch at Hexham Primary School in the east end. That is going to be converted and I'll, I'll have.
Yes, so the work starts on the twenty first of July, it's got to be planned, the land's been handed over. We've been part of the steering group, myself and the club, and obviously all of you guys have been on board with getting through the maintenance that we, we agreed to do for, for the site for the bins and making sure it's tidy. And we're now steering a, a kind of, well, it's, it's, well, steering, steering group on Wednesday of community bodies in Hexham, so number twenty eight, Yufi, Recan, Tanga to come together and, and take it forward for community use with the N C C partners that were being working with in the primary school. So, it's all looking really good, healthy at the moment, the work should be finished, I think it's the end of September, so it'll overlap a bit with the school term, but it should be up and running by then. And we want, as many people who aren't interested, so we're talking sports groups, community groups, to come forward and contact us if they're interested in booking it out or community use sessions. We're hopefully going to have a kind of community gatekeeper to keep it open for free use during certain times that are yet to be agreed, during the holidays and weekends, for kids to have a kick about, as used to be. Doing good, and I mean, something ladies on school sites. So, yes, the idea is that it's for everyone, but it will be bookable, because it has to sort of pay its costs going forward as well. They've got one in Wylde, they've got one in Annick, they've got one in Ashington, so they've been rolled out, we are lucky to have the second phase of development going into Hexham, so, I mean, we need play sites in Hexham, it's desperately now that middle school is, is probably moving on. So, yes, if anyone's interested, please do come forward, if you've got a sports group that's keen to book it out, let us know.
Could you, could you close on dates?
No, just from the meeting today, the work's going to stay out earlier August and it'll be.
Oh, right, you're slight for planning, okay, so it'll be a bit later, okay, so it'll be up and running by autumn, but they've got, they've got sort of dark skies lighting that's gone through planning and there'll be a community use agreement on those, they'll not be on all the time, but it will allow for winter play and autumn play for all the clubs that need it. And there will be reduced rates for local community groups, so that's brilliant.
Yeah, so I'd just like to thank Suzanne for the progress on that, because I was part of that, that meeting, we've got with the, with this school and I felt so frustrated dealing with them, obviously, it's completely horrible. So, you've done well, like, get that over the line, because.
Super great, well done.
I was grunting my teeth in many of the meetings, I tell you. And, right, land transfer, so Mike, Mike, I've had your, your land transfer of the allotments, is that what we're talking about?
It is.
It is.
It's not mine.
Yeah, well, it is.
That must have all happened now.
He's been picking up, so, so the land transfer of the allotments is finally, finally completed, well done, got to get that over the line.
Well, I think, I think it was out of plan, you.
Yeah.
But I think you might want to get at some point two allotments out of this space, then come and throw them in.
Good, 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 and. What does that mean?
Now, they're, they're looking for a, a rep for Hexham and Hexamshire. Why the two are linked together, I don't know, it's historical, I don't know, we decide whether they come from here or Hexamshire.
But they're asking for a rep, anybody's interested.
For what? For now.
But it's the, the local.
No local association, no local council, so it's all the parish and town councils.
Don't all wish it once. Right, to agree with the council, he, um, for, we are looking at more, uh, not that many, but, um, so you have summary of receipts and payments.
So, because. Well, yeah, just, just the first, the first three, just, just a summary of what we're looking for. And then the next five, uh, ends in a, a J.
Pass that, this is a lot more clearer than it ever has been, it used to be. It's probably difficult to, is there any questions, anybody wishes to, to ask? Okay, happy to approve. Okay, that, that sneaks as a agreement to be, to note the approval of the committee meetings, I think thirteen, so. And, oh, yes, and, and, and all this, right, I'll just, I'll just do these here, so I've got a couple of things I need to raise. Minutes of the Financial and General Purposes Meeting of twenty first of May, twenty twenty five, page one. Page two, any questions? Uh, minutes of the planning and infrastructure meeting on the third of June, page one. Page two, page three, page four. Community engagement of ninth of April, twenty twenty five, page one, page two. Yes, Penny.
So, we're going to start with the finance and general purposes meeting, we have an intensive burst of met, you're actually part of June, we're maxed, so, yeah.
If you met.
For these minutes, not today.
No, these minutes were the minutes that you approved the last time. It's the final one of, maybe to only come into full cancel once they're approved by the committees, because this is the last time.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yes, sorry. Right, and, so the board announcements, and, right. Who, who, who are you asked to give your photographs or the website, who, who is it from?
Pat from Neil, our new councillors.
Right, so we need a photograph of, so can we.
Yeah, okay, my Andrew. Oh, no, no, you did that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, part of Neil and Chris. Can I say about, could permission for, could you get photographed by Andrew, because he'll leave to see if you just, just do that, so, okay, just get that out of the way. And, right, and paper, the use of paper. The, the proposal is, is, is sort of a policy of like saying, right, instead of having paper, is that everybody's going to be opted in to using electronics, unless the one that you opted out. So, what that means is like, say for example, you have a piece of paper here, I'm a paper person, I just love to draw, so I've always said I would like to opt out and actually have paper, because I just, I find it easier to, because I think it's more important for me that decisions are made right than actually saving five or six pieces of paper, so, but it's up to each individual, so, so the, the suggestion is that everybody's going to be opted out, opted in to be electronic, if the one that opted out, which you can, you can see now, and you can get some papers out, so I'm, but my, my neighbours opted out, because I like to have paper, just to, to.
Sorry, is that, is that just for the council meeting, the full council meeting?
No, not necessarily, no. Or the paper, but it won't be posted here, they'll just be far, far back, I mean, that being there in attendance, yeah.
I'm going to.
Hey.
I'm okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I, can I just ask if you're going to opt out, then can you make sure you put your apologies in if you're not going to be there, because otherwise it's.
Yeah, anyways, yeah, so if you're not going to be there, okay, thank you, thank you. Um, applicant, what was the applicant?
Um, the Hexham Town Council grant.
Oh, yes, 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 the Hexham Town Council grant funding, I guess I've got that in there. So, the grant funding is now open and persons wishing to make applications, so that we licence the community centre, the community partnership etcetera. The closing date is the first of October, so the day is now open. So, our new councillors, what happens is those persons, those organisations will complete their funded application, they express what they intend to do, what they've had in, in the past, what they intend to do in the future, and they may attach their annual accounts, they may attach their annual report, what they've done in the past, and what their intention is to do in the future, and then they will ask for a sum of money that will then go to, to the Finance and General Purposes Meeting, where councillors will decide on the sum of money that will be granted. Or not, is the case. Is there anything else, is there anything else? Right, Tom?
I don't know if this is the right person, but I have been invited to the Hexham Hub and I've given my apologies, because this Thursday and probably any other Thursday for the foreseeable future. I have been invited to the Hexham pub and I've given my apologies because this Thursday and probably any other Thursday for the foreseeable future, I won't be able to go.
Right.
So maybe, because we're all here, maybe now's a good time to get another representative for the Hexham pub.
Good. Yeah, right, okay, is there anybody interested in Hexham Hub? So the Hexham Hub is a Northumberland County Council meeting, um, county councillors of North, uh, attend for Hexham alongside several officers. Uh, we have had one town council representative for many years. Uh, it used to be fairly frequent, but it's kind of been a bit, bit up and down, to be honest. Um, it's normally been quite interesting and, you know, normally kind of press some pressure points on it. So is anybody interested in being the mayor of that?
Actually, we, because, how, does it mean that you're saying less than monthly?
Yeah, less, less. Down, down, off, online, online, down and off.
It's really good, his deputy councillor along with the estates team often in advancement, they'll go through various issues.
Right, so, so Roger's interested, anybody else? No?
I am being Roger's deputy, if you can't. So that's really good.
It has been a case where, what in one town council is going on now? So, um, that's, that's, Penny and I are there to go.
Right, okay, all right, all right, that's.
We'll try it.
Right, that's, that's. Yeah, well, that's, well, that's the more, what, what our intention is, but we're certainly want to respond, yeah.
That'd be good, Thomas, the mistake, we'd call him, yeah. I don't know if this is the right version either, I'm beginning to say. So, um, we won't be meeting before this event happens, but the town council supports the Bluegrass Festival and, which came as the Bandstand Sessions, which is now thriving. So I'd just like anybody who's watching and anybody who's in the room, it's the last weekend of July. So please look at Hexham Bluegrass online and find out, we've got a fantastic programme and it's free.
Uh, yeah, and, and I'd also promote something called Cosmic Frequencies, which is the science fiction, um, event, uh, which, which are looking, this is going to be the first one they've done in Hexham. And they're looking to do something going in the future, uh, you know, with the cosmic frequencies allowed. Uh, that's, that's going, uh, so that's, that, that has several events, um, August the eighth, ninth. Uh, but we can say it later, we get on. Um, so anything else?
Chair, have you under any of the business?
Yes, yes, yes.
Uh, I'd like to bring something up for the next meeting. Uh, it contentious, um, and it, uh, involves the playground. Uh, we put some money aside and people like me voted for a huge increase in precept of supporting, and it's motioned as a second. I think we should do it straight away and borrow the money. Um, you know, we can borrow money at a very reasonable rate. I predict that the cost of doing this redevelopment in two or three years' time, when we've got all the money in, will be far more than the rate of inflation. So my suggestion that we'll bring it forward to the next town council is that we borrow any shortfall we can cost you.
So when would that, would that FGP?
Oh, we've already made a decision with.
Have we borrowed the money?
No, we've from our reserves, we've already made.
So it comes out of our reserves and it's been done?
This year, that's, that correct, yeah. Yeah, we've got.
I would have borrowed the money. Yeah, I'm sorry, maybe Susan.
Um, yeah, I missed it, yeah, right, okay. Right, um, like, Corstal?
Um, just the, um, Nalc News, Cam News, CBA, Rural Bulletins, Chrisless. And there's also been some communication from GMP, um, asking for town council events that you may wish to attend when possible.
Very good.
Should, should, should be right, the matter, to be, not the matter, should be right, the.
Even if he asked. Well done, right?